Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is June 9, 2020. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
President.
Ms. Bowers.
President.
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Williams.
Here. Is Mr. Majors on the telephone, Mr. Petrowski?
He's not, but I just heard from him, and he said he's running a little bit late with work, and he's trying to get on as soon as possible.
Okay, please excuse him, please, until he arrives. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on for the invocation tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to do the invocation. Before I do that, I want to make a statement. Today was a sad day nationwide and for the family of George Floyd as they laid to rest his body in Houston Memorial Gardens. Harrisburg City Council again extends their heartfelt condolences to the family. And as they embark on the days ahead, our prayers are certain with them. Mr. Floyd began a legacy in this nation. Where voices were silent, they are now being heard to bring about reforms in the judicial system. Harrisburg City Council has already demonstrated solidarity for George Floyd's family, but we cannot allow his death to be in vain. Harrisburg City Council, along with Commissioner Carter and the mayor, are looking to bring about reforms in the judicial system. This time in our history summons all of us, red, yellow, black, brown, and white, to participate in changing the American systems so that everyone in America can truly be free. Tonight, I am asking everyone to continue using their voice, and the best way to bring about changes is to register to vote and follow through by going to the polls on election day. Your vote is the strongest power you have to effect change, so use it. Now, before I do a moment of silence, I'm going to extend an invitation to my council members. I'll start with Mr. Mattson. Would you like to say something?
Sure. Like so many, I had some time today to review the Mr. Floyd's funeral and meditated on his legacy now. And while it's sad that he passed, it's touching so many people from across the world tuned into his services and expressed and mourned with his family because that's the first thing I think about is what is this family going? They didn't sign up for this. They didn't sign up for this kind of publicity, and we, as a nation, grieved with them. We felt their pain, and I was, I hope that that gives that family some comfort, that we are grieving as a nation with them, and all the other families that have lost somebody to violence in America and particularly unjustly to law enforcement. And look forward to working with all of you on making sure that we do the best we can to make sure that does not happen in this city and in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Ms. Daniels.
Not at the moment. I'm just looking forward to seeing the ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Green.
Coming down from La Vira.
Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams. Thank you, Councilman Mattson. Just as we mourn with Mr. Floyd's family, I think it's important for us as elected officials to keep the conversation going, to not let his death or the many deaths before his go in vain, to really keep it going and making sure this isn't a one-time, quick reform. But to make for sure, in order to make systematic change, we keep the conversation always progressing as our nation's always progressing, as our policing is always progressing. We need to make sure the conversation's always progressing. So thank you for giving us this time. Thank you for everyone who came out to protest, to march, to make their voices heard. So I just look forward to working with the police department, with city council, and most importantly, with the constituents to make for sure the city of Harrisburg makes the progress that we need to make.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. I won't belabor the pain. I think we all know how we're feeling at this very moment. I continue to pray for the family of George Floyd, Tyrone Gibson, and others who have been victims of police brutality. As you said, there's still very much more work to do, and I look forward to working with my colleagues to ensure the health and safety of the residents of the city of Harrisburg is our number-one priority.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mr. Allott.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, as we try to think about what a legacy of this moment in our nation's history is, I think it's important for us to remember and to carry on a conversation, much like Councilmember Green said, and in many cases, very uncomfortable conversations, recognizing the past, understanding where we are today, but really trying to finally take a step forward. These conversations about equality have gone on and on and on and have belabored our nation way back to its inception. You know, we're all called to do better. We're called to be better. We're called to make good decisions for not just ourselves, but our communities and all the communities that make up this great nation of ours. I've been ruminating on the fact that it's Pride Month in the LGBTQ community, and I know so many of us who have worked in advocacy within the LGBTQ community have recognized the intersectionality of all of our issues. And I know I speak for myself, but I think I speak for the larger communities that make up that wonderful acronym that we have, that we stand in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement and the importance of ensuring that fairness and equity transcends the color of our skin, our gender, our sexuality, any of the things that we put out there, that it's so important to bring us together as a larger, more unified community. And I recognize the value of the differences we bring to the table, but I hope and I pray that our conversation going forward does bring real change. I'm excited to know that we can have this conversation at our level, at the local level, and expand that conversation, what's happening at the state and the national level. And the work that we all do together, I think, is so important, and maybe the greatest legacy we can leave George Floyd, it was his unfortunate, timely death, untimely death, that led our entire nation to make a great step forward, to embrace a larger movement of change. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam President.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mr. Majors, are you on the phone yet? Okay. Well, let us now take a moment of silence in the grief of George Floyd and all the others who have died as a result of racism. Thank you, council members. We will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, President Williams. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to communications, Councilmember, the mayor would like to speak to us. Mayor, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to address President Obama's challenge to mayors throughout the country to examine the use-of-force policies that we all have in all of our cities and to adopt the challenge of eight can't wait. There are generally regarded by those who have studied use-of-force policies that there are eight foundational principles that should be embodied in a use-of-force policy in order to prevent violence against civilians. If you look at Harrisburg's policy, we currently have codified in writing seven of eight of those points, and the eighth point is one that we can certainly add. There are aspects of our policy, however, that we may want to strengthen, or we may want to amend or change. And what President Obama urged all cities to do was to start a conversation and to try and channel some of the anger and frustration that is out there towards a collective policy change on the local level around use-of-force doctrine. So we've taken the step in Harrisburg to put on our website, very easy to find, the general order related to use-of-force in the city of Harrisburg. So if you just go to harrisburgpa.gov, there's a button right there on the homepage that takes you to not only a copy of the actual use-of-force order, but also a sort of summary of how the city deals with each of those eight points. We've also established an email. It's simply eightcan'twait@harrisburgpa.gov. That's the number eight, C-A-N-T-W-A-I-T, at harrisburgpa.gov. And we're asking the public to read the policy and submit suggestions for edits, changes, revisions to that email. I'm pleased to say we already have over two dozen comments that have been submitted just over the weekend to that email since we've set it up, and I think we're beginning what is a larger conversation. So my request tonight for city council is to help get the word out to the public that the use-of-force general order is on the website. It's actually always been on the website. Our general orders are on the website, but they were previously pretty hard to find. Let's, I'll be frank, and you had to really search for them, but we've made it very easy now. And I'm encouraging people to read it and engage in a conversation and a dialogue that's going to result in substantive change. So I'm going to continue to talk about this. If you could also help spread the word about eight can't wait. Now, this isn't the only thing we're doing at the city of Harrisburg, but it is one thing that we can do very easily because a general order is basically a statement of our values as a community. It is a statement of how we wish to see force deployed, what the continuum is, what the circumstances are. So it's a great way to focus our attentions on a larger conversation that can lead to change, and it's something within our control to change. Now, I know in the coming weeks, we are going to be working in partnership with you to introduce a variety of measures, a variety of new ordinances, and new guidelines for things such as an advisory board and other initiatives. But looking at the start, at our use-of-force policy, I think is a great way to get people involved in the conversation. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to mention that tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to working with you to strengthening those policies that we have in place now.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to communications, anything else? Is Commissioner Carter available tonight?
I came on behalf of Commissioner Carter tonight. If council members have questions, I'm happy to answer them. If I may, communicate one more thing to the public and to council on a different topic. We had great success last weekend with our new Saturday Nights in the City initiative. And since last weekend, we've been contacted by a number of restaurants that would like to join, and that is a wonderful thing, and we're hoping that even more restaurants will reach out to the city. We're providing traffic control, and we're working with the Visitors Bureau to help with promotion. Any restaurants that are interested should simply contact the city. Our economic development team, including Nona and Jamal, are out there sort of actively reaching out to additional restaurants, and we think it's a great transitional step to allow for outdoor dining here in yellow. It's not going to bring restaurants back to where they were, but it may make people feel comfortable going out and experiencing company again in public in a safe manner. So please, please reach out to the city. If you're a restaurant owner or you know one that would like to participate, the program is open to everyone.
Mayor, I do have one question. I was asked by some of the residents, will Friday be also an opportunity for the restaurants to have the street closures as well?
So right now, we've announced it's just a Saturday night initiative for the four Saturdays in June, but it is possible that we could expand it to other nights of the week, yes. It is also possible that we might want to extend it, you know, for the whole duration of the summer. So basically, last week was a great success. We're going to continue to build on that, add some additional restaurants into the mix, get more and more people out, and then we'll see where we are. But this is a great partnership between the city and the restaurants. That is an industry which has been hit very hard by COVID-19, and we're trying to do whatever we can to help bring them back and make people feel comfortable to go dining in a safe manner.
How does this affect SP parking?
So we've talked to SP Plus about this, and thank you for mentioning that because one final communication, and we'll be getting to this on the agenda, is, of course, the parking enforcement is going to be returning to Harrisburg next week. We've tried to give people ample notice. Everybody is sort of getting back to work slowly, and so that will be starting in effect next Monday, but it will not affect the Saturday Night in the City program. Again, that's a partnership, and SP Plus is pleased, I think, as well as the city, that we're encouraging more people to come downtown. So in the long run, the strategy is one which is going to help people feel comfortable parking and engaging in the city again. So they're all in, and we're working together on this initiative.
Okay. Any other questions, council members?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. Thank you, Mayor, for those updates. I have a question, I guess regarding just public engagement with the eight can't wait and the other upcoming police reform ordinances. So we have the public comments that will be received. Is there a time period that they'll be received for the eight can't wait?
With encouraging people to submit them, this is something that does not have to take a long period of time to do, but I want to give people enough time so that there can be outreach. I have been in conversation with some of the organizers of the recent Black Lives Matters protests about creating a town hall. We have agreed to participate in this, and it's just a matter of scheduling. We've suggested the possibility of doing this at the bandshell in Reservoir Park so that it could be an outdoor event. So I don't have a date for you on that, but I would see the conversation perhaps culminating and then in that public meeting. I'm also going to be discussing it further on my Facebook Lives every Friday at noon with various community leaders, including the police themselves. And this Friday, we'll have some representatives from the police department on as well, talking about their perspective on the use of force. So no, this does not have to take more than a few weeks, but there's no hard and fast deadline for when people can submit, but it's open now, and I encourage everyone to get involved now because we need to really seize the energy of this moment and turn it into positive change.
I agree. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. The town hall was my next question. And then I think my final question, oh, as we move forward within the colored phases before we get to green or as soon as green hits, will residents have an opportunity to engage or how will we share information on what the green phase looks like for the city?
So I think we are rapidly moving towards green in Harrisburg and all of Dauphin County. I don't have any specific information as to when that would be, but it would not surprise me to have that happen in the next several weeks. I would like to say as well publicly that we received very encouraging data today from the wastewater epidemiology that the city and CRW have been doing on the spread of COVID in the community as measured at the wastewater treatment plant, and it is showing a reduction in estimated cases, which is mirroring the larger reduction that UPMC and other testing facilities are seeing and the Department of Health is seeing. So while we still need to be cautious and wash our hands and take precautions, it is true that the virus is less prevalent and that we're seeing a positive trend in the right direction. So I think it will be possible for the city to move to green, and as we move to green, we would also, in green, be reopening City Hall. And one of the ways that we're communicating, because that was your question, is there'll be another flyer in this month's trash bill, which is going out in about another week, that talks about the phases and the differences and what's allowed and what's recommended on the different phases, and we're going to just continue to have this dialogue as we are here tonight. But it is, we're moving in a good, positive direction, and I was very encouraged by the testing results that we received actually just yesterday.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council members? Ms. Bowers. Mr. Allott.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I had a follow-up question about just the correspondence between HPD, Capitol Police, and even state police. Some of the questions I've asked or have been getting from members of the community have centered on how communication goes from one agency to the other and then also to outlying communities. There was a post that was made on several township websites that, following Saturday, last, I guess, two Saturdays ago, that were very misleading and, again, kind of set the wrong picture from. It made it seem like angry, violent riots. I mean, you name all the kind of negative connotations that I think are hardly indicative of what was actually going down. And I'm just trying to understand where that messaging comes from, how it goes out, how it's disseminated, and maybe it's not something you can answer right now, but I'd just be interested in know kind of a whole communication flow of where and what happens by way of messaging and communication through the various agencies that are often involved with events that take place in and around the Capitol.
Yes, thank you for that question. And if you look at what's happened over the last week in advance of the second Black Lives Matter rally that happened on Monday, there was a lot of coordination between the various agencies, state, Capitol, city police. That culminated in another rally on Wednesday that actually brought out the governor onto our streets. That resulted in a series of initiatives on his part to do exactly that, to basically try and improve communication and have a sort of common series of standards between all the different agencies. And this past Monday, there was extraordinary cooperation between all of the different groups. Now, luckily, it did not amount to anything that ultimately was concerning, but there was a lot of preparation. So I think all the agencies are working well together. If I can, one of the things that I'd like to do with the eight can't wait initiative in Harrisburg is I'd like our use-of-force general order to be a model for what perhaps could be adopted by, say, the Capitol Police. And you're rightly sort of pointing out that we need to have a sort of consistent approach. We can do this in Harrisburg, but what if we're getting different messages from different agencies on the, you know, the East Shore and the West Shore as we did last Saturday? Then are we really going to have the type of systemic change that people want? But I think that's where we can be leaders. We can set the model for best practice, and then hopefully we can communicate what we're doing here to these other agencies, and we can have a common adoption of these central principles.
So that certainly speaks to, I think, the inter-agency coordination, but how about how information is communicated to outlying communities? And where does that stem from, and who controls that messaging that goes out?
So when it comes to planning for the events, the city command staff meets with the command staff of these other agencies, and there's a sort of central command. And Dauphin County is a part of that. We're cooperating not just with the city police force, but also the surrounding municipalities as well. You are correct in noting that last Saturday, there seemed to be a disconnect between what was going on on our side of the river and what the perceptions were on the other side of the river. In fact, there were some announcements made that the city was on lockdown, and there were some routes into the city that were closed, all on the West Shore, none of which was initiated by the city or asked for by the city. So some of this is on the county level, and there definitely needs to be better communication between, say, Dauphin County and Cumberland County. I think there's a lot of lessons that we've learned, and there's a lot of room for improvement. And all I can say is that from the city's standpoint, we are actively trying to have those engaged conversations right now and trying to do a better job of making sure that everybody is on the same page in the future.
Thank you. And my final question, sorry, to ask, what are the follow-ups, I think, that came out of this, at least from my perspective, that's really concerning to me, is there seems to be an absence of a kind of a crisis communication plan that the city can use, particularly in a way to keep those of us on council informed of what's happening as close up to the minute as possible? The reason why I really want to make sure that we have a plan for how this happens is that we've had conversations back and forth amongst us as a group and individually. We often feel very left out of what's happening, but yet we're called on to respond to things because we're often that face that people see right away in the community and want to connect with, and many of us withheld saying anything because we didn't know what the facts were. And we've all been, I think, very good at not wanting to disseminate false information with things out there, but I felt like the delay was probably too long before we had kind of adequate information to be able to spell. So I don't know if there's a way that you can instill, whether it be a point person as a crisis communication person, that when something happens, that there is maybe an auto alert that goes out, maybe it's a text to us, maybe it's something that we get information as close to real time as possible so we're able to actually then be somewhat more knowledgeable on things that are going on as they're going on. And I realize there's some perceived challenges that exist with that, and maybe it will never be perfect, but I really would like to request that something be put into place that will help make that happen in a little bit more real time for us.
I think that's a really good suggestion, and it's something that we can definitely work on together moving forward. I think it would pay dividends, and it'd be a good thing to adopt. I may discuss that with the fire chief, and perhaps we can establish a sort of channel of communication that's real time. It's a good idea and something that I think is easy enough to do. So I'll have discussions about it, and I look forward to working with you to do just that.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you, Council President.
Ms. Bowers, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate all the information that you've given us this evening. May I suggest maybe you look at building the position of the communications director so that person could be the point person to disseminate the information out to council?
So, Madam President, so we do have a communications manager, and he is working sort of around the clock, and he is also the station manager, and he's handling all the Facebook Lives, and he's managing the meeting that we're doing tonight, and so there's an awful lot on his plate. I am willing and happy to have a conversation with you about establishing another position, which is focused on making sure there's better internal communication and generally better communication throughout all aspects of government. We don't have that position funded at the moment, but it's one that we could create, and there are other approaches to it as well. We could establish a certain emergency communication channel, maybe a texting stream, and some other things that we could do right now even without a position. So I'm open to all of it. Very good suggestions. Let's work collectively on trying to establish whatever the consensus best approach is.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else, council members? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, is there any questions or comments? Mr. Petrowski?
Yeah, we received two public comments. One's pretty lengthy. I just received it within the hour in a handwritten form, so I'll try to read it, but I'll read the other one first. It is submitted by Claude Phipps, 2300 Block of Swatara Street. He asked, "What is the status of the comprehensive plan and the time for public review and comment? Mr. Peters has worked for the past few years on this. In 2018, you and council have directed this to be brought to closure. I know that there is a conflict between the city administration and the plan that had wide community input, but this has been outstanding for five years, and we need to get this plan on the books."
Mayor, do you want to address that?
I will yield to Neil Grover on that because I know there's a current litigation, and let me see, I will jump in if you have further questions after Neil.
Okay, Neil. Neil, unmute yourself.
As the council is aware...
As the council is aware, the city fired Brett Peters before 2018 for non-performance on the contract. Uh, he continued on a voluntary basis interacting with the parking authority and is essentially seeking to shake down the taxpayers of Harrisburg for money, uh, to line, uh, his pockets. Uh, the city is going to defend it on all fronts. Um, and, uh, he has sued us in county court, he has sued us in state court, he's had the audacity to submit a document, we don't even know what it is, to the copyright office with Harrisburg's name on it. Um, and, uh, you know, we, uh, take the matter very seriously. I will note that the original agreement gave a license from the moment of the contract for the contents of that to the city of Harrisburg for its use for what was developed. Uh, it was all paid for by taxpayers' money, uh, and we will deal with him. Um, uh, and, you know, that is what I can tell you. You also are aware that we had to end up hiring not one, but three separate contractors along the way to deal with what was not done. Two of them were the original subs. Uh, and then we had to put it back out for RFP to make it into a manageable document from where it was. The planning commission has worked with that contractor to move that along. That is pretty far into process. Uh, there is a continuity review underway. Um, and that continuity review, as I would suspect, will then move a document with an approval of the planning commission to the city council sometime later, uh, this year, hopefully sooner rather than later. We, we just had that discussion very recently, uh, and that is going forward. So the city is moving forward with its project. Uh, I consider Mr. Peters a distraction, and we will deal with him.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grover. Uh, Mr. Petrowski, what is the second question?
Right, and Mr. Majors, I believe, is, is now on.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Majors.
All right, so, so bear with me on this one, because it's handwritten, but this is submitted by Caitlin McDonough, McDonough. It, the address is 200 Hillside Road, Harrisburg, PA 17104. Um, let's see. And here's their comment. According to MappingPoliceViolence.org, there were only 27 days in 2019 where police did not kill someone. Black people are three times more likely to be killed by police than white people, even though white people are more likely to be armed. Harrisburg is not different than Minneapolis, St. Louis, North Charleston, Baltimore, Tulsa, Baton Rouge, Wilmington, or Portsmouth. Harrisburg is not sheltered from the racist roots of modern policing, nor is it immune from the brutal, inhumane racist modern manifestations of those riots. On June 4th, 2020, this council characterized the murder of George Floyd as unwarranted actions of a Minneapolis police officer. Why I am sensitive to the fact that council must be cautious in public statements, I am deeply disappointed that this horrific act was not condemned in much stronger terms. I'm dis- disappointed to hear talk of action without any real substance. I have no doubt that council is aware of, um, systemic racism, and I have no doubt that council believes it needs to change. I do doubt that council will take serious evidence-based action to ensure change actually happens. The suggestions I have read thus far are forming of a police advisory council and the coordination of training between depths are not the type that will make the change that is so desperately needed and so very long overdue. Training cannot change the racist history of modern policing, nor its modern effects, and advisor council, I fear, will serve no purpose other than divert even more of the city's scarce resources away from the citizens and towards the police. Regarding scarce resources, the Bureau of Police budget has 20, 27% of the city's total general fund in 2020. This includes five-figure salary increases for every single detective, forensic investigator, lieutenant, sergeant, and, and corporal on the force, and five or four-figure increases for every single officer. The budget for the Bureau of Police in 2020 is nearly $20 million. By contrast, the budget for Capitol area transit is, uh, 361,802. By contrast, the council recently awarded block grants to local nonprofits totaling under 122,000. A 10% reduction in the police budget, which is $2 million, we mean more than 15 times more money for those grants. Police cannot prevent crime. Only engaged and supported commu- community can do that. What will city council do to increase civic engagement and better support our community? Must divert resources to the community and away from the police. On the issue of police accountability, what is the status of police body cameras? The subject was first raised in 2017. We are told that it will be rolled out in 2018, and the project was delayed until 2019. On April 16th, 2019, a vendor was chosen to, to furnish equipment and support for body cameras. The budget included $150,000 to purchase the cameras. When the city negotiated five-figure raises for the police, did they also negotiate how the body cameras will be deployed and used? And so please make this information public. If not, please explain why after three years, virtually no progress, progress has been made towards outfitting the police with cameras. What happened to the $150,000? Did the city pay the vendor even though the force was not ready to begin using the cameras? No more budget increases for the Bureau of Police, no reses, resources diverted to secondary policing measures, uh, such as the advisory council. Show us the citizens of Harrisburg that you believe that Black Lives Matters, defund the police, and invest in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. We thank her for her comments. We are looking at taking measures, and we will try to make sure the community is updated as to what reforms we put in place. Any other comments?
Madam President, may, may I just address, may I just address the body cameras? Because...
Okay, wait a minute, Mayor. Wait a minute, Mayor. Okay, uh, Mr. Petrowski, is there any other comments from, um, the residents?
No, that is all.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I just, uh, I understand there may be a misperception out there regarding, uh, the body cameras, but, uh, our Harrisburg police officers are actively wearing body cameras. Uh, they are, uh, have been wearing them for some time. The, uh, they are, uh, all of the patrols are, are utilizing them, and, uh, they were in fact, uh, uh, you know, in use, uh, during these recent, uh, protests and rallies. Um, the police department supports the body camera initiative, and, uh, that is an example of, I think, s- uh, a successful program that was rolled out in response to, uh, community, um, concerns and requests. So, um, I don't know why the perception is that they're, they're not there. They are there, and, uh, we should be very, uh, proud of that and pleased that, uh, uh, we were able to accomplish that in Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, council members. Approval of legislative session minutes of May 26, 2020. Are there any admissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Moving on to reports to committees, we have none this evening. We move on to ordinance for first reading, we have none. We move on to ordinance for amendment, we have none as well. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none. And we then move on to resolutions. Mr. Petrowski, please read Resolution 40 into record.
Resolution 40 of 2020 is a resolution appointing Mr. Leland Nelson to serve on the environmental advisory council.
That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Resolution 41.
Resolution 41 of 2020 is a resolution appointing Mr. Ambrose Buck to serve on the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study Coordinating Committee.
That also will be placed in administration committee. We now move on to Resolution 42.
Resolution 42 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study Regional Transportation Plan Implementation Program for $832,437.94 to fund a lane diet landscaping and curbing work on foster routine, second, and front streets.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 43.
Resolution 43 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Kinley, Kinley and Horn and Associates Inc. for the purpose of providing east-west multimodal connection phase-one engineering services.
That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. We move on to Resolution 44.
Resolution 44 of 2020, uh, is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wilson Consulting Group PC for the purpose of providing engineering services, including conceptual design, final design, and bidding construction services for the Boyd Street Urban Meadow Expansion.
That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 45.
Resolution 45 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Her- Herman International Ministries, well, business as Wild Heart Ministries, to provide labor for the disassembly and packaging or transport of the ground-mounted section of the solar panel array at 2525 North 7th Street, Harrisburg, PA 17110.
I now ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Majors, this is in your committee. Would you like to hit this up, please, for an explanation?
Okay, sure. I guess we'll turn it over to, uh, I don't see anyone from engineering. Okay, Mayor, provide the explanation. All right.
Yeah, I'd be happy to start, and then we're, we're also, uh, joined by, uh, Dave West and, uh, Christopher Nath, so they can, uh, they can chime in. But, uh, uh, the reason that we're asking to spend the rules on this tonight and move forward with this, uh, contract with Wild Heart Ministries is because, uh, we were originally planning to, uh, take these solar panels in stages over the course of, uh, a period of several months. And we were originally planning to have our public works department do that work internally, and it would not have required, uh, contracting and, uh, with an outside entity or partnering with an outside entity. Um, we were, uh, quite frankly, uh, surprised a, a couple of weeks ago when, uh, we moved very quickly, uh, and, and, and I think it's a, it's a good thing, we moved very quickly from a red to yellow, and, um, it, this began to accelerate, uh, construction projects like the Hudson Group's project for the state office building there on North 7th Street, um, uh, at a, at a faster rate than was anticipated. And they basically informed the city that they need to begin construction, um, on that lot, uh, uh, very quickly, as soon, as early as next week. Um, and that precipitated, uh, us coming up with a, a new plan that would allow us to remove the solar panels and store them on, on our property, uh, more quickly. And, uh, it was Dave West and Aaron Johnson who reached out to Wild Heart Ministries after our public works team did a test on their own to determine just how, uh, technical and difficult the disassembly of these, uh, solar panels would be. It turns out it's not that difficult, um, and what's really needed is just a, a large amount of labor to be focused and consolidated on taking these panels, um, putting them on pallets, and then we will be able to transport them for, for later use. But with that as an introduction, if I could turn things over to Dave West, he can talk a little bit operationally about what we're proposing. And if you have questions about, uh, the panels themselves, Chris Nath can also address, um, the city's desire to take these panels. I'll note that, uh, this is a free gift from, uh, the Hudson, uh, company to, to the city, and, uh, we are looking forward to being able to, to keep these panels, uh, in Harrisburg when, um, when, uh, when the, the plans for that site no longer, uh, can utilize them. So if I may, Mr. Chair, go to Dave West next.
Absolutely. Dave? Can I unmute your mic?
How about Chris?
Hey, Chris. Chris?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, uh, just as an overview of the array, um, it is, um, to put it shortly, it's 3,536 solar panels. Uh, the amount of power that that array produces within a given year is approximately equal to, in terms of kilowatt hours, about 12% of the city's current municipal power use. Um, so being able to take the full array and utilize it, um, reinstall it and utilize it for the city would result potentially in a savings of about, um, well, 10%, approximately 10% of the city's power use because of a slight reduction in efficiency on the panels, because they're about eight years old now. Um, that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 a year, not to mention that we may be able to also make money selling, um, solar renewable energy credits as well on top of that. Um, so there's definitely, uh, a great opportunity for us to take these panels and make use of them. Uh, we're looking at potential opportunities in the future in terms of reinstallation, um, such as, well, so there, there's two sections of this. One is a, a covered parking array, and the other is a, a large ground-mounted section. We're potentially looking at installing the covered parking piece, um, in the public works parking area. Um, we're looking at how that might logistically work with, um, what Pennada is doing as far as restructuring that site, and, um, trying to look at opportunities to reinstall the rest of the ground-mounted array. Um, I think Dave may be unmuted now if he wanted to speak more to operationally what we're doing.
Can someone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Uh, good evening, council, Madam President, uh, Mayor, sir. Yes, we also, um, again, as the mayor, uh, was, was, was just discussing about, we were, we went on a timeline, uh, where the Hudson, Hudson Group gave us a timeline, and it, it's the 15th of June that they want to start construction. So we had to reach out to someone who was, uh, uh, able to immediately assemble, uh, organization of people that were able to do this in one day, and we have to do it in one day. So this is why we reached out to Wild Heart Ministries, because we, uh, we, we know through working with them throughout the years that they can assemble that type of group so we can get it done in one day, which is the 13th is on Saturday, and this is what we have to do in order to accomplish our goal. This is why we, we had to go this direction.
Okay, um, did Dave or Chris have anything else before I move on to questions? Okay, uh, so I don't know if Dave or, or Chris can answer this. So, uh, you know, we all are familiar with the work of, uh, Wild Heart Ministries, uh, so just wanted to know if there was any costs associated with their participation in, uh, in this, uh, event, in this activity to, to move the panels?
Yes, there's a cost associated with it, and it's about $10,000 to be able to have, uh, a hun- a hundred organized people in order to carry out this function within one day to make sure that it's completed. With our, uh, highway department, we're going to move them. They're just going to, uh, disassemble them so we can get them out of there. So, uh, we are, have organized them with the pattern of the, the direction that we want them to go as far as, as teams to be able to accomplish this goal within one day.
Okay, great. So, and then where will, where will the panels be, uh, being moved to? So, understanding they need to be moved, uh, where, where are we going to be storing them?
We will store them up, at, at, at the present time, we'll store them up where we have our salt pile, and we're going to cover them with tarts, and we're going to seal them with, um, uh, elastic plastic around them to make sure that they're maintained until we're able to use them.
Okay, and I don't know if Dave or Chris could speak to the, uh, so what is the, the normal life cycle for, uh, the array? Because, you know, I understand that they're eight years old currently. Uh, you know, what would be the useful life for the city on, on these panels once we're able to utilize them in any future projects?
The average, uh, useful life of a, of your, of a typical solar array is 25 to 30 years. You start to see, uh, decline in efficiency of the panels over time. Um, at this point in time, they would probably be somewhere between 95, uh, 93 and 95% efficiency. Um, generally speaking, by the time they've reached about 20... Generally speaking, by the time they've reached about twenty-five years old, they've dropped to an eighty percent efficiency in terms of the amount of power that they can produce. So the array would still be able to provide, say, fifteen to seventeen years of functional use for the city.
Okay, great. And do we have a timeline estimate on when any projects that we will look to be utilizing these panels for will be put into place?
So that's something that's going to be discussed. Like, I've already talked with the mayor about that, looking at utilizing funding in the twenty twenty-one budget to be able to do the installation. So while we can utilize our own labor, there's still going to be the need to contract out for, say, installing the concrete footers that the array is mounted on top of for the covered carport section, and incidental costs like that, racking frames, and getting electrician to actually connect the electricity after it's been constructed.
Okay, and from the looks of it, this was just a, I guess, I don't know if Neil or the mayor can answer this, because this was a, we didn't go out to bid. Is that due to the costs associated with the the move, so we don't have to go through our normal procurement rules, or is it just because of the how expeditiously they would like us to move on removing these solar panels?
I can speak to that a little bit. There is a, there was certainly an urgency because the estimate of man-hours needed was much higher than originally anticipated when we were looking at the highway department to do it. The notice came very recently, and they, Hudson is under, if I understand it correctly, a penalty provision in a state contract if they don't deliver on time, and they can't deliver anything if the panels are sitting there. So we already were negotiating a formal gift agreement to gift it to the city, those panels, and a lease agreement extension for a lease we already have across the street that was previously approved quite some time ago. And so this sort of came out of the normal procurement to do it, and that's why it's actually down to you as the approval to enter into an agreement. That's why it's in front of you. Because Wild Heart looks at it as a donation. That's how they look at it as a donation. We look at it as sort of a contractual expense. And, you know, so there's two different lenses on it. But that's why it's to you, because it was, there was no way to put it into any system, and we just sent it instead of a service contract straight to you to so you'd be aware of it as a council.
Okay, I may still have additional questions, but I'd like to open up to my fellow council members. I'll start with, I'll try to remember our normal order on the, Dave, do you have a question? All right, I'll start with Councilman Madison.
Yeah, real quick, as a registered, I believe Wild Heart is a five oh one C three, and can a municipality contract with a five oh one C three for a direct service like this? I'm just, I'm asking legal. I just didn't know if we could do that.
We have been in contracts for various things with five oh one C threes over the years. Frankly, we did not dive in with two feet on that question because this happened so fast. You know, it came to us literally very spur of the moment because of where we were, and you know, the options at the moment for the city of Harrisburg is not to take the panels and sort of go back on what our commitment was, or to be at risk of leaving panels that were now given to us on someone else's property and risking the cost of someone else having to remove them, which will become a city expense. So I can't tell you that we're perfectly aligned on this one. I could just tell you, you know, it's been a work in progress. It's happening very fast.
And I appreciate the urgency piece to all of this, but I would hate to see a nonprofit getting some sort of legal issue because of contracting with the city is just my concern. Not saying that it that I know for a fact that it would be an issue, but it just, I don't know. A little bit more certainty.
So do I.
Okay. Then the other question I have is, does this require any special training? Wild Heart typically relies on a big volunteer base. Is this something that we're comfortable doing with through volunteers, or do you need trained professionals doing this type of operation?
I think Dave speaks.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave or Chris? Can you speak to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. It doesn't require special training. We actually had one of the professionals from Hudson come and train us in how to do it. It's basically you use a drill, you disconnect, you take the panels off, you place them in a galea, and then you put them on a trailer. They trained us how to do it. We also are going to meet with the Director of Wild Heart Ministries for him to do it, so his people can do it also. It's not difficult at all. It's a star wrench. You take off six pieces, you take the panel off, and you put it in the galea.
Okay. Now, I trust your professionalism and that judgment, just would hate to see if there was an accident, the city getting some kind of liability. So if they're getting trained and we're confident in that training, then, okay. And I guess for me, I'd like a little bit more clarity on that legal piece, if possible. So for that, I'll leave it up for my colleagues for questions.
All right, are there any additional questions from any members of council? I see Councilwoman Green, you're unmuted. Do you have a question?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I do. Mr. Major, I do. How many, how many man-hour is this going to take, Dave?
It's going to take one day with the hundred individuals that can, through Wild Heart Ministries are going to pray. If the highway department did it, it would take twenty days, and we don't have twenty days. That's why we had to seek outside source.
Okay.
Because if we did that with twenty days, then we would not be able to go into our paving season, because it would take our whole department to do this, and we will lose a month in the paving season to get behind.
How does this conflict with our laborers who are under the union agreement? That they will be able to have an opportunity for overtime? So do you?
It wasn't even, it wasn't even amounts of overtime, because even if you would work, even if you would work the overtime and work your individual eight hours, we still are time sensitive to the Hudson Group of the deadline that they gave us.
Well, I understand that because, Dave, I live up there, so I see how quickly they're moving, but I just want to make sure that we are not in conflict with the union regarding the usage of other individuals when it's a labor job that our union members can fulfill. So that is my only concern at this point.
Oh, all right. Okay, looking, let's see here. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have a question or any comment?
Just a question. Once the panels and approach the end of their life, what's the cost of disposing of them?
I don't have the full cost numbers right now. I can't tell you that they are something that is generally recycled. And that's one thing that I'd be looking to the Dolphin County Recycling Center and DEP to work with us on. But I can try to get you some numbers in terms of solar panel recycling by the end of the week.
Okay, and by when does the administration think it will have all of the panels in use for the city?
Well, that, I mean, like, that could be a question as much for the mayor, Public Works, as me. I would, I would hope, depending on if we can properly budget for the installation of them, maybe by the end of next year, or at the latest, by the end of twenty twenty-two.
So in terms of their, in terms of their lifespan, then, does that twenty-five years, does it get stopped when the panels are not in use, or does that twenty-five years count?
No, no, no. It's just twenty-five years in general. It has to do with the structural integrity of the actual panels themselves. And there's not any issue with storing them outside, because they're currently outside in all elements, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
And if I chime in for a moment, so as Chris Nate described, there is, there is an immediate use, which we can utilize at our public works facility. And then there is the larger array, which is going to be much more costly. So there's a sort of phase one and a phase two. We don't have any of that budgeted for this year, but it is possible for us to consider that as we go forward with our budget for next year. We'd want to look at the potential energy savings that such a installment would yield, which would end up paying us back over time. And we are also going to be receiving some money from Pendot for the the taking of some of the land there at the facility, and potentially that revenue could be reprogrammed into a reimagining of the public workspace, which includes a portion of these panels. So I don't know right now if it's realistic to think that we'll be able to deploy all of the panels next year, but I think it is definitely possible that we will begin phase one. And we already are being forced to reimagine our public works facility because of the Pendot taking.
Is there, Neil, is there a certificate of insurance that the Wild Heart Ministries are obtaining?
Yeah, there's lots of insurance paperwork back and forth. That's really what we've been doing with them.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Majors. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. That was actually about to be, my next question was just to make sure that any paperwork regarding liability was in place for the city, so that should anyone get injured, that, you know, that they understand that where the liability would stand on that. Let's see here, does either Vice President Allen or Councilwoman Bowers have any questions regarding this resolution?
I don't at this time.
No, thank you.
Okay. Any additional members of the city council have any questions on Resolution forty-five? Okay, seeing none. I think, you know, Neil, is there, I mean, I know, I know that we're sort of, you know, being asked to act on this quickly to Councilman Madison's point about contracting with a five oh one C three. You said we've done this in the past. Can you point to any of the five oh one C threes that we may have, you know, done a contract to work with, just so that we can?
In the labor, up the top of my head, but, you know, you just did one with Impact Harrisburg for the grant program, who's a five oh one C three. We do grants routinely with five oh one C threes related to federal money. And then we've had the equivalent of multi-party agreements for other funding issues. Not in a service sense, you know, we, you know, I think further back in time we did, but I don't believe since I've been here, they've been in this, in the pure, you know, providing us with a pool of people to provide assistance at one time. You know, if I drilled down, I could find more, but off the top of my head, I don't know which they were. It was before my time.
Okay, and then I guess for me, are all the volunteers going to be, are they required to be over, you know, of working age? Since, you know, this is going to be on a project that, you know, I'm just, again, concerned about liability and the potential injuries.
Right, so I think it can't be perfect, but we're up to five different documents as of this afternoon, including the document, which is the gift document between Hudson and the city, between the agreement that makes sure everything's insured, between Wild Heart and the city, between the lease agreement in Wild Heart and the city, and then there are two documents that came in that are, we're signing both Wild Heart and the city with Hudson for a right-to-access agreement. You know, basically making sure they're not completely on the hook if something goes awry. And which is fair to, I think, to them as well, because everyone's coming onto their land to get this done, to create a donation to the city. The, it's not going to be perfect. I mean, we've tried to come up with every imaginable piece we can to make this happen. Public Works is going to be there to supervise it. And I, you know, Dave West is a pretty safety-conscious guy, from my experience. And so, you know, that is, I think we're going to do the best it can be, but it's just not going to be perfect because of the timeframe.
Okay, and then additionally, I know Chris mentioned the potential savings of moving forward once all of the panels are installed of fifty thousand dollars a year in terms of electricity usage. Understanding, you know, we don't plan installation until twenty twenty-one at this point. Are we looking, do we have any, is there any discussion about where that potential savings can be redirected within the city budget, or is it just still too early to know what the result of any cost savings would be to where we could potentially redirect any of those funds?
I think I might defer to the mayor on that one.
I think it's a little early to know, but theoretically, we could, we could deploy that savings in a number of different ways. We're also, we're also potentially looking to partner with Lax Swama for a R cap application, which they've been looking at for, which would allow installation to go on some of their land through partnership with the city. That would be another potential source of funding for this. But this will all be part of a conversation that we'll have with next year's budget, and I'm sure it will be an active and vigorous one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Majors, I just have one other question.
All right.
Mr. West, are they going to be doing street closures in that vicinity?
Beth, can you say that again, please?
Are there going to be street closures in that particular area?
Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I said, they're going to be. Are the streets going to be closed in that particular area during this time?
No. The streets, the streets doesn't need to be closed, because they're behind a fence that is sealed by, not just the fence, they have a fast seal around the fence. We are enclosed, and we're going to come in off of the end of Seventh Street in Division, so we will be inside a hub.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. West.
And just to be clear, was that savings, was that savings one five or five zero?
So I think, Councilwoman, you were breaking up a little bit.
Okay, the savings amount, is it one five or five zero?
Well, she broke up again, but I think I can, I can try to clarify. I was saying that it would be approximately ten percent of the city's current power use. Our current power use equates to about five hundred thousand dollars in terms of generation and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in transmission. So that's where I got the fifty thousand dollar number in terms of the amount of money that would be saved every year. It's based on ten percent of the current amount of money that the city pays for electricity.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on Resolution forty-five? Okay, seeing none. I guess with the rule suspended, do we want to, President Williams, do you want to take over? So I'd ask that we consider this for a vote, and I'll turn it back over to you, Council, President Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Majors. I may have a motion to go back into the general business of the legislative agenda.
Moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution forty-five. Since there's no additional questions or comments, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution forty-five passes.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to Resolution forty-six.
Resolution forty-six of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security's twenty twenty regional. to the Department of Homeland Security's twenty twenty regional catastrophic preparedness grant program to fund projects that manage catastrophic incidents by improving and expanding regional collaboration for catastrophic incident preparedness.
That would be placed in Public Safety Committee as well. Moving on to Resolution forty-seven.
Resolution forty-seven of twenty twenty is a resolution confirming the resumption of street cleaning schedules and enforcement of parking-related ordinances.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, the executive order that rescinds is actually effective this coming Monday. Uh, as council had voted to confirm that executive order when it first came back into virtual sessions, uh, we, we sent this down to council. But the announcement has gone out to the public that come Monday, street cleaning is starting. So I, I would request for practical purposes, so there's no confusion that council vote on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grover. Councilmembers, any questions on Resolution forty-seven?
Uh, just, I guess, just for clarification purposes and for the meeting again, I guess, uh, you know, as discussed, this is going to resume the normal street cleaning, uh, schedule that is on the city's website so that, uh, everyone is aware that beginning June fifteenth, is that correct, Mayor? For, is that for street cleaning as well as street sweeping? I know, oh, excuse me, and parking enforcement. I know parking enforcement begins the fifteenth. Is that the same for, uh, the street cleaning?
Yes.
That is correct. Uh, we're, we're doing this in conjunction with CRW, which, uh, uh, we had enough time to notify, uh, uh, those that they needed to notify to make sure that the street cleaning would begin. So the public can infect, uh, in effect, expect to see both parking enforcement officers on the street on Monday as well as the street sweepers in action.
And we publicly, uh, went to the media to inform the community that we're going to, you know, start those cleaning of the streets and also parking enforcement.
Yes, we have. It's been reported in the media. We gave everybody actually two weeks' notice. So, uh, uh, we, we tried to get ahead of it as best we could. Um, I, uh, from an SP plus standpoint, they have brought their employees back to work, uh, now. And, uh, uh, so the meters will, will be in effect, uh, starting Monday, uh, as will the street cleaning, uh, rules and the residential permitting rules.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Majors?
No, but, no, no question, just a, a comment that, you know, just to, another reminder for folks that the, that the street cleaning, there's an interactive map that's available on Capital Region Waters website as well as the City of Harrisburg's website so that people know, uh, when their street, when to expect, uh, the street sweepers to resume. Uh, and, you know, we want to make sure people are aware because, you know, given the current, uh, situation that we're in, uh, you know, we don't want folks to have, you know, we want to give people as much notice as possible because, uh, with, with additional, with the return of enforcement comes a return of potentially being able to be ticketed, uh, if you aren't removing your vehicle. And given, you know, the current economic situation that the country's in, I just want people to know, uh, to be mindful so that, uh, we can ensure that, you know, we don't have residents as we're, as we're starting to gain some sense of a return to normal, uh, that residents are aware and we don't want people to have, uh, to be too negatively impacted. Um, I don't know if this is possible, uh, but, uh, considering working with, if we can work with SB plus, uh, and Capital Regional Waters potentially in that first week, if they could issue warnings versus tickets just to get people back acclimated to, um, to this process, uh, you know, we've, you know, we're all in this, we're all in this, uh, we're all dealing with this pandemic together, uh, and I think that would, if, if they're willing, that would be a good, uh, step to ensure that, you know, additionally that people get, you know, just a little bit more notice before we go live because unfortunately not everyone is as in tuned in, um, you know, via social media or even, uh, you know, receiving some of those, uh, inserts in their, in their mail. And we just don't want to catch too many people off guard. So if that's something that's possible, just know that out there is a potential consideration for SB plus.
Uh, Councilman Majors, that is something that we, uh, conveyed to SB plus, indeed asked SB plus. I, 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 we do not have a commitment, uh, from SB plus to do that. But, uh, in terms of city, uh, parking enforcement, that is something that we as a city can do, um, in those areas that city parking enforcement is in effect.
Okay, and that'd be, and I think that'd be great, you know, for, for the residents, don't, don't fall under, uh, uh, SB plus in terms of the, the, the ticketing, uh, that we get a warning out there so that they're aware and then we can move forward. So I think that's a, at least we could, we can, you know, control what we, we have the ability to control. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, from SB, uh, plus's standpoint, uh, to be, uh, fair to them, they did grant, uh, an extra period of time here, uh, since, uh, the, the, the city moved from, uh, red to yellow. Uh, and they, uh, they, they did accept the city's request to, to wait two weeks before, um, this coming Monday to begin re, uh, begin with parking enforcement again. So, uh, it is, it is in partnership and, uh, uh, I do want to recognize that they, they have been trying to work with the city and, uh, uh, did suspend their ticketing operations as, uh, we requested them to do. And, uh, you know, just, uh, just wanted to mention that on the record. Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Very nice. Mr. Petroski, please call the vote for Resolution forty-seven.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
The Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution forty-seven passes.
Thank you, Mr. Petroski. The councilmembers, any old business? Any new business? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to, uh-
Ms. Daniels?
Uh, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? I'm seeing a, okay, okay. Um, I just wanted to let folks know that, um, we're going to be starting to, um, address, uh, the, our playgrounds and our open spaces. Um, so, um, if anyone is interested in helping, um, us participate, have that discussion, please email me at sdaniels@harrisburgk.gov. Um, but we should be starting pretty soon to at least have the discussion so that people can safely, um, return to the appropriate spaces in the right way. Um, and then just the announcement. Um, and I did want to, uh, I couldn't press unmute fast enough, but what's happening with the housing bill and when does lot euro think the public safety bills will come down?
Let's see, I'm unmuted. You, you have to refresh my memory on, when you say housing bill, which one you mean? You mean the Affordable Housing Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a solid prediction because we've been sort of limping along here during the pandemic. Our office lost all support staff, uh, throughout this entire pandemic. Um, so we are, uh, sort of just making it through with the new thing. So frankly, there hasn't been a lot done during the pandemic period, uh, on the housing question. Um, there, uh, we consider the text amendment, um, that is part of, uh, the zoning code that is, uh, I believe before council now, sort of the first piece of that, uh, because it allows for, uh, units to be built, uh, that right now are not allowed to be built without a very much more expensive process to get there in terms of just regulatory process. The police things I expect will come down in pieces. You know, I met at length with, uh, Councilwoman Green. I've spoken to the mayor. I think the entire council has to be engaged on this, but we have talked about a number of possibilities, but as fast as we talk about them, we get input from others, including what President Obama put out. Uh, and, uh, we have been in touch with our outside council on the difference of, um, what is a policy change versus what is a statutory change and what that does to the risk of liabilities to taxpayers. Um, I think that's a public discussion that has to happen. Ultimately, it's, it's your decision, um, you know, but, uh, certain things create additional liabilities and I think that gets, you have to weigh that as you make a decision. So I would anticipate, uh, that a draft piece of, uh, resolution, the first piece, would hopefully, uh, be to Ms. Green, uh, before next Tuesday's meeting. But, uh, I'm going to want her to just herself to be comfortable that I, I've understood the discussion. That's going to go to reporting requirements to city council and the mayor on police data and improving that. And then, um, it's going to move along piece by piece. I think you could anticipate that the subject matter will get tougher and tougher as you go forward because that is where things are moving in terms of public discussion.
Any other new business, councilmembers?
Uh, Council President, um, yeah, and well, thank you for that, Neil. That was going to be part of my question, uh, well, a, a comment during the new business section. I know, um, you know, several of our council members are, are working diligently to, uh, come up with, uh, you know, some, some reforms, uh, that are, you know, quite honestly, uh, needed, uh, you know, across the country but, and, you know, specifically if we're speaking in Harrisburg, just in terms of, uh, improving access to data, uh, transparency, accountability, um, in, from our, our police department. You know, we, uh, the folks, these folks are, uh, are, are here to protect and serve our community and we just, you know, we always talk about a lack of communication, uh, at all levels in terms of us dealing with, you know, whether it's council to the administration, administration to council, you know, and police to the public, public, the police to the, the city. So if we can really have all these discussions, I think, um, you know, the, the time is now. We've been, we've, we've talked about this in the past. We weren't able to get too much traction. Uh, but it looks like, uh, we do have a commitment, uh, publicly from the police chief, uh, the police commissioner, as well as the mayor to, uh, have some action. Uh, but, you know, where the rubber meets the road with terms of a policy is in the details. So I look forward to a, a very robust conversation with all the members of council, our community, uh, and everyone on how we work to, uh, improve accountability, uh, to our, our citizens, uh, from the police uh, and how we are going to move forward in this, uh, in the society because we don't want, uh, you know, we don't want to see, uh, anything, uh, like what has been occurring over the past few weeks, um, ever happen again. So I know, uh, my commitment has been here and it's, it's still here and, uh, but, uh, I have a, uh, a renewed commitment to ensure that, you know, this does not go to the wayside. We are, um, you know, if we have to exercise our power as a council to, uh, to step up and, and hold things up so that, you know, we don't, and if we don't see movement on these things, uh, speaking as one council member, uh, well, uh, my, uh, yeah, my life has changed over the last few months. And, uh, yeah, the, 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 the events of the last few weeks and the few ye- last few years, decades, centuries in this, in this country, uh, have, uh, you know, really, uh, taken a, a toll on, on all of us. Uh, and it, and, you know, and now is the time to act. So, uh, look forward to all these, uh, pieces of legislation coming forward. I have a full trust in Councilwoman Green and her ability. And I know I've, you know, I've also been reaching out to members of our community to get input and feedback on some other ideas that are, uh, out there because, uh, something needs to be done. It needs to be done quickly, but it cannot be done without, uh, the public being fully engaged in what's happening. So we, I'm also going to encourage our public to hold us all accountable. All of us are very accessible in the city of Harrisburg. We're a phone call or email away. Stop us in the street, uh, you know, socially distanced as of right now, uh, just to, to ensure that, you know, you hold us accountable. Um, you know, call us out on, on, on social media, which has been happening. I think we've even seen a lot more. This is the most engagement I've seen as a member of council in my four years, and we're all socially distant, right? So, you know, usually we ask people to come to city council, uh, and, you know, we get a, a turnout, but it may not be the turnout that we're always looking for. We try to hold public meetings out in the community, uh, to, we have mixed results with those. But right now, I think, um, the engagement is, is stronger than it's ever been, and, uh, we can't let this go. And I hope that as we move to the green phase, uh, and we can return to normal that these, you know, the ability to, to stream are, I mean, we don't have any more barriers, right? Before, we couldn't stream because of our system and the technology and, and, and city halls. All, uh, we're all operating right now via social media and, you know, via Zoom. So I think, you know, that excuse of us not being able to do that is gone. So we're going to have to engage and engage on all fronts to, uh, to make our city better. Uh, sorry for getting on the high horse. I haven't, and, you know, sorry to the public and my members of council for not being able to be as, uh, available in, in these meetings. You know, my, uh, listed as an essential worker for my job, so I just haven't been able to meet all the meetings. But I think, uh, you all know our commitment to ensuring Harrisburg is a better place. So, uh, thank you for just indulging me for a few moments.
You're welcome, Mr. Major. Anyone else for new business? And I think we're all in agreement with you, Mr. Majors, that we want to see something done and we don't want to see this go by the wayside. We're all going to be involved in, you know, contacting each other and making sure that we sit down to reform, uh, the judicial system along with the mayor and with the engagement of the, uh, residents of Harrisburg as well. This commissioner, uh, he is totally committed. He had called me earlier. Uh, he was going to speak tonight, but of course the mayor spoke. So we're looking forward to setting up those meetings. Anything else, councilmembers? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is officially adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.